Councilmember Barlow?
Here.
Councilmember Bowers?
Yes.
Councilmember Brem?
Here.
Councilmember Furrow?
Yes.
Councilmember Jarvis?
Here.
Councilmember McLean?
Here.
Councilmember Nesbit?
Here.
Councilmember Rezegi?
Here.
Mayor Tausseba?
Here. Please rise for pledge.
Pledge, ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of United States of America and to the authority of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberate and justice for all.
Everybody get a chance to look at the agenda. Any additions or corrections? We have one correction. We need to amend 9B. Councilmember Nesbit wants to stay on the park and rec committee and Hastings Emergency Services ad hoc committee, so we will only be accepting his resignation for library and airport. Anything else?
Motion to accept the agenda as amended?
Support.
Motion by Nesbit, support by McLean?
Yes.
I wasn't asking, I was saying.
Some of the questions.
Aye. All saying? Next item, approve the minutes of the March 25th, 2024, regular meeting minutes. Any corrections or additions to that?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Barlow to approve the minutes of the March 25th, 2024, regular meeting minutes. Do I hear support?
Support.
Supported by Furrow. Roll call.
Councilmember Bowers?
Yes.
Councilmember Brem?
Yes.
Councilmember Furrow?
Yes.
Councilmember Jarvis?
Yes.
Councilmember McLean?
Yes.
Councilmember Nesbit?
Yes.
Councilmember Rezegi?
Yes.
Councilmember Barlow?
Yes.
Mayor Tausseba?
Yes. Public hearing, we have none. Public comment. Anybody here like to speak from the public? Tell me who you are, give you three minutes. Formal recognition and presentations. Mayor Tausseba proclamation presentation to Linda Mopin, Executive Director from the Family Support Center for Child Abuse Prevention Month. We have a stand in tonight, Bill. What's your last name?
Mattson.
Bill Mattson. Child Abuse Prevention Month. Whereas child abuse and neglect is a serious problem, rank is one of the greatest risk to the health and well-being of Berry County children, and whereas child abuse and neglect may be the result of various cultural problems such as inadequate parenting skills, family violence, poverty, family dysfunction, mental health problems, homelessness, and crime. And whereas the most recent Berry County data from 2022 reported 134 confirmed victims of child abuse and neglect from ages zero to 17 by Children's Protective Services, and whereas the Family Support Center of Berry County has been designated by Michigan's Children's Trust Michigan to lead alongside local community-based programs to assist in expediting efforts to prevent child abuse now and in the future generations through joint inter-agency prevention and efforts. And whereas the most precious and valuable asset of our county is our children, and we must dedicate ourselves, our energy, and our resources to nurturing and protection of those most vulnerable individuals. Protecting children and strengthening Berry County families is a shared community responsibility, and whereas community action is needed to help families break the cycle of abuse with small or simple gestures, just by reaching out and showing you care about the children in your family and neighborhood demonstrates that we value our children. Now therefore it be resolved that I, David J. Tausseba, Mayor of City of Hastings, do hereby declare April 2024 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Hastings, Michigan. And I urge all citizens to work together to help reduce child abuse and neglect significantly in the years to come. In witness hereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the official seal of the City of Hastings, Michigan, to be fixed this eighth day of April 2024. Yeah, go ahead.
Just a few words. Our director, Linda Mopin, wanted me to apologize for not being able to come in and talk to you and thank you tonight. The Family Support Center of Berry County has been the designated child protection partner with the State of Michigan for almost 45 years. We're in our 45th year of service. The proclamation is true. The one thing that is kind of misleading is during COVID, there was not a lot of child abuse or neglect reported because families stayed home. They didn't go to school, they didn't go to doctor's appointments. So as we move away from COVID and get back to normal, we will see more cases of abuse and neglect reported and substantiated here in Berry County. We wanted to thank the City of Hastings for all the support that you've given us over the 45 years of service. Thank you.
Hey, Dave Hatfield called me, he's unable to make it tonight. I noticed on social media, the last time that Dave wasn't here, he took a little bit of flack because he was on the agenda. I put Bill, I put Dave on the agenda, so when he does come here, he has unlimited amount of time to give a report and talk to the council people. So he's always welcome to be here, and he's got something else going on tonight, so hopefully he'll be back next time. Items of action by unanimous consent. Entertaining motion from the YMCA to hold their yearly summer program at Fish Hatchery Park Large Pavilion and Fish Hatchery Building from June 17th through August 9th, 2024, Monday through Friday, 8:30 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion to approve that request.
Support. Motion by McLean, supported by Rezegi, to approve the request from the YMCA to hold their yearly summer program at Fish Hatchery Park, Parks Large Pavilion and Fish Hatchery Building from June 17th through August 9th, 2024, Monday through Friday, 8:30 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Discussion. It's the same thing they always do, so no discussion, roll call.
Councilmember Brem?
Yes.
Councilmember Furrow?
Yes.
Councilmember Jarvis?
Yes.
Councilmember McLean?
Yes.
Councilmember Nesbit?
Yes.
Councilmember Rezegi?
Yes.
Councilmember Barlow?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowers?
Yes.
Mayor Tausseba?
Yes. Okay, we have, can I entertain a motion to accept with regret the resignation of Councilmember Bill Nesbit from the Library Board and the Airport Commission, effective immediately? Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Motion by Jarvis?
Support.
Support by McLean to accept the resignation with regret from Bill, Councilmember Bill Nesbit from the Library Board and Airport Board, effective immediately. Discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Furrow?
Yes.
Councilmember Jarvis?
Yes.
Councilmember McLean?
Yes.
Councilmember Nesbit?
Yes.
Councilmember Rezegi?
Whether, yes.
Councilmember Barlow?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowers?
Yep.
Councilmember Brem?
Yes.
Mayor Tausseba?
Yes. Entertaining motion to consider mayor's appointment of Councilmember Norman Barlow to the Library Board with consent of council. The term of appointment is April 9th, 2024, through December 31st, 2025. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion. Or?
Motion by Nesbit, supported by Rezegi, to appoint Councilmember Norman Barlow to the Library Board with consent of the council. The term of appointment is April 9th, 2024, through December 31st, 2025. Discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Jarvis?
Yes.
Councilmember McLean?
Yes.
Councilmember Nesbit?
Yes.
Councilmember Rezegi?
Yes.
Councilmember Barlow?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowers?
Yes.
Councilmember Brem?
Yes.
Councilmember Furrow?
Yes.
Mayor Tausseba?
Yes. Entertaining a motion to approve the mayor's appointment of Councilmember John Rezegi to the Airport Commission with consent of council. The term of appointment is April 9th, 2024, through December 31st, 2025. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Motion by Bowers?
Support.
Supported by Barlow, two Bs. Motion by Bowers, supported by Barlow, to approve the appointment of Councilmember John Rezegi to the Airport Commission with consent of council. The term of appointment is April 9th, 2024, through December 31st, 2025. Discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember McLean?
Yes.
Councilmember Nesbit?
Yes.
Councilmember Rezegi?
Yeah.
Councilmember Barlow?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowers?
Yes.
Councilmember Brem?
Yes.
Councilmember Furrow?
Yes.
Councilmember Jarvis?
Yes.
Mayor Tausseba?
Yes. In your packet, you have a contract for chip sealing from Ace Asphalt and Paving in the amount of $178,035. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Brem?
I'm sorry, support. I didn't hear you.
Borla Rezegi, to approve the contract for chip sealing from Ace Asphalt and Paving in the amount of $178,035. Anybody have any questions about this?
I have a question. How many bids did you have?
I had, well, I had three people that I contacted, Ace being one of them, and Evergreen Roadworks out of Ohio, and Don John out of Grand Rapids. The one out of Ohio, and one other one out of Grand Rapids did not give me a quote back, so.
So they were the lowest bidder, or?
Only.
Only.
No.
The only bidder, then?
I didn't, yeah, Ace was the only bidder.
Any other questions? When are you gonna start this?
Hopefully, I'll check your schedule, but probably the middle to the end of May.
Great. Roll call.
Councilmember Nesbit?
Yes.
Councilmember Rezegi?
Yes.
Councilmember Barlow?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowers?
Yes.
Councilmember Brem?
Yes.
Councilmember Furrow?
Yes.
Councilmember Jarvis?
Yes.
Councilmember McLean?
Yes.
Mayor Tausseba?
Yes. Also in your packet, entertaining motion to approve the purchase order for 5,000 gallons of unleaded gasoline from Crystal Flash in the amount of $13,100. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion to approve.
Support.
Motion by McLean, supported by Barlow, to approve the purchase order for 5,000 gallons of unleaded gasoline from Crystal Flash in the amount of $13,100. Questions? Roll call.
Councilmember Rezegi?
Yes.
Councilmember Barlow?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowers?
Yes.
Councilmember Brem?
Yes.
Councilmember Furrow?
Yes.
Councilmember Jarvis?
Yes.
Councilmember McLean?
Yes.
Councilmember Nesbit?
Yes.
Mayor Tausseba?
Yes. Entertaining motion to approve the purchase of a digital watchdog CCTV surveillance system from Riverside Integrated Systems Incorporated in the amount of $8,219. Do I hear a motion?
Make that motion, sir.
Support.
Motion by Nesbit, supported by McLean, to approve the purchase of a digital watchdog CCTV surveillance system from Riverside Integrated Systems in the amount of $8,219. Questions? Roll call.
Councilmember Barlow?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowers?
Yes.
Councilmember Brem?
Yes.
Councilmember Furrow?
Yes.
Councilmember Jarvis?
Yes.
Councilmember McLean?
Yes.
Councilmember Nesbit?
Yes.
Councilmember Rezegi?
Yes.
Mayor Tausseba?
Yes. In your, in your packet, you have a report and, oh, a report and a letter from the sewage treatment plant. We need to consider future operations of the RV dump station at the wastewater treatment plant based on recommendations by the city's utility superintendent and contract to wastewater treatment plant operator. Vern, you and Ford, wanna get up there and talk, or you wanna? Do I hear a motion? What do you, what do you guys wanna do with this? I've just been listening to you guys before we decide what we wanna do.
So I'll have Vern and Ford kind of follow up, but essentially, what's happened here is we have exceeded our permitted allowance of ammonia nitrogen levels on multiple occasions over the past few years, and the most likely cause of this is the RV dump station because there's no holding area, there's no pretreatment, it goes directly into the wastewater plant. And so Eagle has noted this and is requiring us to respond in some way to resolve the issue. So Ford and Vern have spent a lot of time considering this and looking at options in order to do what will likely be required by Eagle for them to find it acceptable and to relieve the possibility of having this issue in the future is quite costly. It could be about $250,000. In our opinion, it's not worth putting that money in. We have a number of other sewer wastewater treatment-related portions of the facility that need improvement already, and this is not the best place where we would put our funds. So our recommendation is that we keep the RV dump station closed indefinitely in order to address the concerns that Eagle has. And so as you've noted, Ford and Vern are both here to answer questions about the relationship between the RV dump station and these ammonia nitrogen exceedances, and what could possibly be done to the plant to alleviate this. But again, it's quite costly, and our recommendation is to keep it closed.
I only have a comment, it's about time. That's been an issue with other superintendents going way back. Everybody kept, oh, it's a service, that's a service, but it was, it's about time.
Sarah, do you know if it's common for municipalities to have a dump station like that?
I, I'm not familiar with any others that do, but I haven't particularly looked.
Mayor, do you know?
Well, if everybody remembers back when the Fairgrounds was at, or Kmart Plaza was at, they had a dump station outside their building, most people dumped there. I know from just a little bit, you know, that I was involved with sewer plant down there. I wasn't a supervisor, I was at the street department, and I, but I saw people dumping stuff down there that didn't belong. I saw somebody dumping oil in there one day, and I'm really surprised the state hasn't shut us down for now. And this, when we decided to spend the $9 million, or whatever it was, back here a few years ago, we really wanted to try to keep the wastewater, or the dumping station down there, but a lot of, what the problem is, you know, these guys, and we have more people down there now than what we used to have, but they're all doing other things. You know, we have a pretreatment plant down there now, you have people operating that. We have, we have issues out to Leech Lake and Middle Lake that we have to be concerned with all the time. I think, I personally think it is to, it's time that we decide to close this thing down. There's no way we can regulate it. Right, Don?
Is it used very much?
It depends on the time of month, the holidays, it's used extensively, especially afterward. I have seen users lined up six and eight deep just to dump in the RV facility, and that's what helps exacerbate the slug feeding problem is that there's just a constant feed of this concentrated septic waste hitting the head of the plant immediately, and that is a very bad situation to have occurring. It sets up process complications.
Do you really think we need it?
No, I do not.
I don't think we do either.
It's, it's something that would need intensive monitoring. You don't have the staff to do that, and they're busy doing other things, trying to operate, maintain the facility. Another key problem is that there's no fees charged for this usage, so there's a lost revenue stream, and users are able to come in and take unlimited amounts of unmetered potable water free of charge. So you're providing free services to people that not entirely are from the Hastings locale. I did kind of an informal survey last summer, and would walk out and, when I had an opportunity, and questioned some of the users, some of them were far away as Wayland and Grand Rapids, and they came here just for the simple fact it was free.
Any other questions?
I have, answer the jackies, as a camper, I've been to other cities, I've never found another city that provided it. Now county parks provide it, but they charge $45 to dump. So, but they got somewhere right there by the dump station that they can charge people, so like you say, it's about time.
And Mayor Tausseba, you mentioned about in the past, people coming in and dumping things like oil. As a matter of coincidence, one of our operators took a call from the public today, the woman wanted to come in and dump. He informed her that it isn't open yet, and she wanted to come in to de-winterize her RV. In other words, she's gonna dump the glycol chemical into the plant, and glycol is toxic. That could kill off the bacteria or the biological activity in the plant. That's an extreme risk.
You know, it wasn't that long ago, we used to have septic haulers hauling down there. We had to do away with that because we were violating our, you know, we had all kinds of problems down there, and when this stuff lays around, it's either in a septic tank or it's in a holding tank on a, on a RV, it goes septic, and it's nasty stuff. If anybody's ever camped out and you leave it in there a couple days, and I was pretty fortunate, we camped, we had a, we had a seasonal campground where we dumped right into their, their tank, but it can get pretty nasty. And I get this, and I think it's, I think it's probably time that we close this thing up too, so. Do I hear a motion?
What's the motion for?
Wasn't it just not too few years ago, we were thinking about closing this down when we decided to add on to the sewer plant? We got a lot of resistance from the public for even thinking about it? Is there any way we can limit it just to city residents?
I don't know how you could do that if you can't maintain it, if you can't have somebody standing there.
That also wouldn't solve the problem with Eagle and with the ammonia nitrogen issues. That would be worse.
The slug feeding character actually still exists there, that there's no way of retaining it, pretreating it, slowly bringing it back to the head of the facility. And when you start getting into that, you're talking about extensive work. That turns into a whole thing with the State of Michigan and Vermont Great Lakes Energy with what's called Part 41 permitting, then that has to be engineered, there has to be plan design reviews, and then approvals, and it just starts a whole snowball effect. The other question I have is if we shut this down, we'll never be able to restart it back up, will we? I mean, the permit process to even get it started again would be impossible. If we decide to shut it down tonight and, and then change our mind in a week or two, maybe, but if we actually shut it down and Eagle take pulls of permits and that kind of stuff, it would probably be impossible to get it started back up again. In its current form, yes, it would be, it would be out of the question. I know it's been a thorn in our sides for a long time, but...
We knew when we did all work to plant down there, it's gonna be a problem because of where it's located at, it's out of sight. You know, people come in that gate down there, they come in and they dump it, whatever's in their tank, they dump. You know, even when, before we had a seasonal campground, when we were hauling our trailer, I would dump it before I left the campsite. You know, and if people are camping somewhere, they still have that option.
Not always, I camp at sites that are rustic, and we don't have that option, a lot of those, so I, several times during the summer, come down and dump there. I don't dump any chemicals in there, but I do dump at that.
Well, you're, you're one of the few that dumps what belongs in there, but even then, even then, dumping something that's septic in there isn't good for that plant. That's what they're trying to tell you. You know, do we wanna spend hundreds of thousands of dollars? What was the last, what was the last fine we paid, Vern, for violation down there? Originally, it was like $300,000. We, you know, we talked to them and they lowered it, but I just don't wanna see you spend that kind of money again, being fined by the State of Michigan, because we don't have somebody standing right there every minute to watch what you're dumping in there.
Mayor, I would move that we discontinue the...
Motion by Bowers to shut the, shut the RV dump station down? Do I hear support?
Support.
Supported by Jarvis? Discussion.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Is there any way that we, I mean, I know that there's an issue with people just dumping there to begin with in the, in the wastewater treatment plant, but because it is a service that we have provided, have we brainstormed any ways that we could, um, charge a fee and recoup the cost of making it coincide or sync with the wastewater treatment plant, so it's not harming it? That's not a, my question's not very good, sorry.
We would have to charge a high fee for a long time to make up $250,000. And at that point, you know, if we're charging as much or more than other areas where they could dump, is there a point? I, I don't know.
I just wondered if anybody had worked out those numbers, or if, you know?
Part of the issue too is we have no data. We don't really know, I mean, we have some observation. We don't know who's there, how frequently, what they dump, we don't have any tracking mechanism. We don't even necessarily know when people have been there. So it's almost impossible to do hard numbers on it, other than to say it would be a hefty fee for a long time to make up $250,000.
And you have to remember, it's only seasonal, it's only May 1st to September 30th, so you have a very short window of what you could garner those fees. No data or no information, you're positive it's this that's causing the nitrates to be high? Are we guessing that it is? I strongly reason that there is a direct relationship there with what occurred last year's violations, and if you look at the screen or Eagle in that violation notice, listed several of the ammonia nitrogen exceedances, and that was just from 2020. And when I go back through the records, this has been a repetitive thing, and for many years. But is, are we sure that it's this dumping station that's causing it? There was no attendant out there saying, well, there was 12 trailers out here dumping that week, and now we've got a problem? You know, it's easy to blame something, but are we sure that that's what it is and not coming from some other source?
The problem you have is wherever the source is, being, it's untreated sewage.
Right.
And that's the only place untreated sewage comes in at, is the RV dump station. Everything else, everything else goes through that pretreatment plant first, right, Vern?
Yes. Also, something else to remember here is that we have to come up with something to even open the station this year. We have to come up with a plan, with an idea, a fee to charge. This isn't just something we can just open the gate and say, go ahead, continue to use it until Eagle tells us to shut it down. They've already said you must do something with this facility.
So what, what are, we take away the service, what are people who would use the service, what's their other options?
Stay parked, they could go out there and dump.
And I don't know that maybe, you could probably give them a call tomorrow, I don't know if Gun Lakes Sewer Authority, they let septic trucks dump out there, maybe they let camp... they let campers dump out there, I don't know.
I think it's too soon to make that, this decision tonight. I think we need to look into it a little bit more.
I, I would agree.
So what you're planning, we have a motion and support to close it. Uh, you want to modify your, your motion, Don?
Close it down.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a support to close it down. A motion made by Don Bowers, supported by, uh, Jarvis. Any further comment? Brooke Hall?
Councilmember Bowers?
Yes.
Councilmember Brim?
Yes.
Councilmember Furrow?
No.
Councilmember Jarvis?
Yes.
Councilmember McClain?
No.
Councilmember Nesbit?
Yes.
Councilmember Rezegi?
No.
Councilmember Barlow?
No.
Mayor Tosba?
Yes.
Motion passes five to four.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Uh, consider scheduling, uh, fiscal year 2024, 2025 budget workshop for April 22nd, 2024 at 6:00 PM. Do I hear a motion to schedule that?
I'll still move.
Motion by Barlow, do I hear support?
I'll support that.
Support by Brim to hold, uh, the 2024, 2025 budget workshop for April 22nd, 2024 at 6:00 PM. Brooke Hall?
Councilmember Brim?
Yes.
Councilmember Furrow?
Yes.
Councilmember Jarvis?
Yes.
Councilmember McClain?
Yes.
Councilmember Nesbit?
Yes.
Councilmember Rezegi?
Yes.
Councilmember Barlow?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowers?
Yes.
Mayor Tosba?
Yes. Uh, staff presentations, policy discussions, none. City manager report.
Um, so you do have a hard copy in front of you of the summary of the proposed fiscal year 2025 budget. Um, the budget workshop will go through all of this in much more detail. You'll have much more documents in front of you, but this does give you a generalization of where it is that we plan to go with our budget proposal. Uh, there may be some minor changes between what you see here and what, uh, is presented to you at the budget workshop, but this is largely complete. Um, just keep in mind that, uh, with the fiscal year 2024 budget, that that is the approved budget for May. It doesn't include, uh, the projected budget of where we, where we think that will end up. That is the, uh, May approved budget. So we look forward to presenting, uh, the information to you in greater detail at the budget workshop. Um, in addition, wanted to remind everyone that Barry Roubaix is, uh, before our next meeting, it's Saturday, April 20th. Um, so if you can take part in that and see the racers, I'm sure that they'd appreciate that. Um, also Travis is not available this evening. He's at a Public Services Institute training, um, but Rob and I are here and we'll do our best to answer any questions that you have about the DPS report.
Anybody got any questions? You need to put the guy in a spot. I hear that often. You gotta ask him a bunch of questions.
I've got a question.
Go ahead.
Is this all the, all we can do with the seal chipping? We can't do more streets like half the city or anything, you know?
Correct. The, the original, the original list that I wanted them to do, uh, came out to about $550,000. So I knew that was a little too much.
Coffee money?
Um, my big thing with this is I at least wanted to get something started.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, we all know how bad the streets are. And what I didn't include before is this is also a two-layer chip seal.
Right.
So because a single-layer chip seal has a tendency to come up. Um, and the tar emulsion that they're using now is, got a different hardener in it than what it used to have 15 years ago, uh, when we were chip sealing. So they're going to come in, they'll patch everything first and then they'll come in and, and double layer it. But my hope is that next year, um, I can get around some other streets and hopefully make it kind of look a little bit better where you, we're doing like 20 blocks or 30 blocks versus, you know, 6,000 feet. Doesn't seem like a whole lot, but it's, you know, it's maintaining the roads that we have, you know, particularly the heavier traffic roads, you know, Maple Street and West State Road are big ones. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thanks, Rob. Uh, also in your packet, you have Fire Chief George's monthly report. Do you have anything to add?
Not this time, unless there are other questions, probably.
Have we got any questions, Chief? Library Director Hammerling's monthly report. Anything to add? Any questions, Peggy?
Windows are looking good.
Just about there.
Also in your report, you have the Assessor's monthly report. Uh, in that report talks about, uh, border review and all that good stuff, and I think they got through everything all right. Uh, reports and communications, uh, item Y, YMCA updates, March 20th, 2024. Item B, April 2024 calendar. Item C, library board minutes, April 1st, 2024. I, uh, have a motion to accept and place these on file, A through C.
Yes, somewhat.
Support.
Motion by McClain, supported by Barlow, to accept and place on file items A through C. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Hope the same. Public comment? Hunter, anything? Mayor and council comment? Bill, anything to add tonight?
Yes, I would like to offer, uh, thank, my thanks to Officer Babcock with the Hastings City Police for his assistance in a fraud attempt that was perpetrated against one of my neighbors. I had a knock on my door and my neighbor asked me to take a look at something for her. And while doing so, received a phone call from this individual trying to, uh, get information on a check that she had dropped in the mail. And I was able to ascertain that it was a fraud. They called central dispatch and they dispatched Officer Babcock to assist. Long story short, the money was returned to her account and we got it just in time to make that happen. Officer Babcock assisted my neighbor to her financial institution to make sure that she was able to articulate what needed to take place. And it was very successful. So my deep appreciation to that officer. My public service to the city of Hastings started in the sixth grade as a crossing guard for Central Elementary School. And I progressed into serving as a reserve police officer. And for the city of Hastings, as a reserve police officer for the village of Middleville, where I was encouraged to run for office in Middleville as a village council. And from there, was able to make different changes within the police department up and, and including the, uh, negotiations with Sheriff DeBoer to take over the Middleville Police Department, absorb that into the sheriff's office. So having this incident with my neighbor really felt good. Felt like I was back in the game in that respect. And phone calls that I've received over the last few days asking me to consider running for different offices, I've declined. And the reason why I did so was having a gut punching diagnosis that I'm going to be facing over the next few months. And that's the reason why I asked to be removed from committees. But after this incident with my neighbor, it's like, I really don't want to walk away from the parks. That's something that I've worked hard on my entire life, serving the public in that way. And the ad hoc committee looking at public service, you know, facilities and things like that, that's something that I assisted with in the village of Middleville also. But in turning down these other offers for running for office, I was asked if I would consider running for mayor. And today I did pull a petition to do so. I've talked with Mayor Tosba and it's just a spirit of competition. I have nothing that I can say about Mayor Tosba that would be to the negative in this service. Especially when we went to Traverse City for a conference and every table I sat, they saw my name tag, oh, we know Hastings. You have culture there, you have arts, you have concerts, you do all of these things. And you even have a, a city manager that we actually know. And I'm like, whoa. Nothing but good things about our city were spoken at that conference by people that didn't know me from, you know, anywhere. So with that being said, I, I do announce my candidacy for the mayor of the city of Hastings. I appreciate any support that comes my way. And, uh, I guess I'll end with that. More, more to come.
Any comments tonight, Don?
No, I don't.
Oh, I'm going to repeat what I told you last time. Good to see you back.
You're what?
Good to see you back.
Thank you, sir.
Pardon?
Nothing at the moment.
Andy?
Um, I would just like to address my fellow councilmembers and ask that we consider revising the existing ordinance on residual parking, um, on citizens next to their, adjoining to their driveway. I think that there's, we need to address that a little bit further.
No comment?
Becky?
Well, I hesitated when we were taking the vote about the six o'clock meeting. I just wanted to clarify why I hesitated. Because I work 10 hours and I don't get home till six o'clock or actually 6:45. So I'll do my best to be here, um, on time and, yeah, I, I'll be going hungry that day because I won't be taking a lunch.
I'll bring a sandwich for you.
Okay.
Can you comment, Lauren?
Yes, um, I want to say Riverside Cemetery is looking excellent. Uh, I'm out there quite a bit delivering and stuff like that, and I want to say that cemetery looks much nicer than it has for quite a few years. And, uh, I really appreciate what's been done out there. I think it looks good. Secondly, I believe that they're doing a real good job on the, um, maintaining around the parking lots, lawns, that type of thing. It's looking good. And, uh, of course, uh, parking lot four is our front yard, so it does, but it does look good. And I just wanted to make that mention. I think, uh, the people, the men, the workers that are doing this are doing an excellent job and I think they, it needs to be noted.
John?
I'm probably going to say this in advance of you, but, uh, I want to thank Chris Bieber for his services and what he's done for the city.
He's not leaving, yeah. Uh, I want to remind everybody, I saw something today. Uh, city council members shall be mindful of their position and responsibilities to the city of Hastings when using social media. I think we all need to make sure we're not overstepping our authority by putting things on social media. If, if we don't always agree with, with staff, we should talk about it in-house and not put it on social media. So that's just my comment for the night. Anything else coming for council? Entertaining motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Motion by McClain, supported. Support by Jarvis. All in favor of that? I'm hoping.
I'm not hurt.
Well, I agree.
I just can't, I forget what I'm hearing. I can't hear a thing to say. Social media.
I didn't say anything negative at all.